Good morning, everyone. I'm State Representative Robert Freeman, Democratic Chair of the House Local Government Committee, joined with my colleague Chairman Lee James and a few of our colleagues in the committee who were able to attend today's hearing. Today's hearing deals with House Bill 678, which is the brainchild of Chairman Mike Sterla, and deals with an optional sales tax at the county level to deal with either property tax relief or municipal assistance to those municipalities, particularly high-level tax-exempt properties. So with that, I will turn it over to Chairman Sterla. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do, we have to go a few part of our list. But please have a seat. First order of business, of course, is to take the role, so Christina, if you'd call the role.
Sure. Chairman Freeman.
Here.
Representatives Barowski, Serrato.
On leave.
Donahue.
He's not listed.
He'll be arriving late.
Okay.
Okay. Representative Fleming.
On leave.
Hambridge.
Leave.
Kazim. Arriving late.
Probably.
Madsen.
Probably arriving late.
Monroe.
Also probably arriving later today.
Probst.
On leave.
Prokopiac.
On leave.
Salisbury.
On leave.
Sapi.
She'll probably be arriving later.
And Smith-Wadeell.
On leave.
Okay. Chairman James.
President.
Representatives Banta.
Yeah.
Fink. Jones.
Yeah.
Kuzma. Miller. Rader.
Yeah.
Rigby. Brinkavage. Watrow. Wentling.
Yeah.
Oh. Thank you.
Yes. Before we continue with the rest of our agenda, I'd like to call on Chairman James to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all, you Americans.
Thank you, Chairman James. We do have an opportunity for both chairs to make opening remarks, but in talking with Chairman James, I think we'll get to the meat of the issue and just ask Representative Sterla, Chairman Sterla, to give us an overview of his bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Freeman and Chairman James, for holding this hearing. I will answer some questions now and address concerns later also, as other testifiers raise issues. This bill is in its early form, I would say. There's things that I would do to improve it, and I think I'm open to ideas from members as ways to improve it. The basic idea of this bill is to replicate the one-cent sales tax similar to what Allegheny and Philadelphia counties now have. It's a regional asset district tax. In those cases, they use that tax to help fund stadiums and do other projects. The idea here is that every county has tax-exempt properties which are their regional assets, whether it be hospitals, or colleges, or churches, or parks. Every municipality has some of those tax-exempt properties. And so every municipality would qualify for a portion of this one-cent sales tax, and some more than others because some have high concentrations. Some municipalities have upwards of 30% of their properties that are tax-exempt, others have 2% or 3%. But the reality is that those, all those assets that are tax-exempt serve people in the community. And so the reason for them being tax-exempt by nature is that they serve some purpose for the community. So the bill itself currently excludes Allegheny and Philadelphia County. I'm amenable to including them if they want more. I think Allegheny County has expressed some interest in this. Philadelphia, less so, because I think they're already two cents higher. The county commissioners currently under this legislation will vote, or municipalities representing 50% of the commit, excuse me, county commissioners will vote to allow this tax, and then have a referendum. And after it is, assuming it's passed, the way to take it off the ballot, or off record five years later, would be to have 50%.
Microphone on?
Ah, no, sorry. The way to repeal it would be to have 50%, municipalities that represent 50% of the residents of that county asked to have it repealed. I do think that there should be a way that if the county commissioners don't want the responsibility of imposing the tax, that if 50-plus percent of the municipalities, or 50% of the municipalities that represent, excuse me, municipalities that represent 50% of the people in that county should be able to have it placed on a referendum to see whether that county gets to have the one-cent sales tax. The reimbursement to counties would, they could use it for their ongoing municipal services as well as tax relief. I believe that they should be able to get the reimbursement for the costs of the assessment that would be done initially, as well as the cost of distributing those revenues on the ongoing basis. And the calculation, as it's done with the assessment of what's levied in a municipality, I would take the, it's not clear, I believe, in the language. It just says that you get what is your assessed value. I believe it should be your assessed value times whatever your rate of taxation currently is. So municipalities that have high tax rates because of the excessive burden that they have, plus the value of those non-tax properties right now, would then come back to those municipalities if those municipalities, as a result, start to lower their taxes. It would be adjusted each year because they would have a lower tax rate on the properties that are tax-exempt. And I believe that the funds, as it's pointed out in the bill, should be used for core services and/or tax relief. That's a pretty brief overview. I will point out that just statewide, a one-cent sales tax would generate for the counties about $2.45 billion by the year 2026. And so what we're talking about here is something that could provide significant relief for municipalities and counties. Just as an example, in the 22 counties that are represented by the members on this committee, they would get, those counties would get $1.481 billion to distribute amongst themselves and the municipalities. The county itself being a municipality getting a portion of this because they have tax-exempt properties within their county, and each municipality getting a portion of this because they have tax-exempt properties within their municipalities. With that, I'll answer any questions you have, or we can go to other testifiers, and then I can follow up with some of those also.
Thank you. Thank you for your opening remarks. I know that this is similar to some extent to my legislation, which would provide for relief for communities with high tax-exempt properties, using the Johnstown flood 18% liquor tax and driving that back into those municipalities. One question I have before I turn to the members for their questions. Is there a threshold in terms of how much of a tax-exempt presence a municipality would need to have in order to draw down the dollars?
No, no. This would be for every municipality. Every municipality stands to gain something out of this, some more than others because some have more tax-exempt properties than the others. And the one issue that was raised was, well, how do you assess tax-exempt properties? I will tell you that every time a tax-exempt property gets sold to another entity, whether it's tax-exempt or non-tax exempt, someone assesses the value of that and places a value on that property. So it's not, while some people say, well, how could you possibly assess a tax-exempt property? You assess it the same way you assess every other property because it has certain intrinsic values. And so the initial cost would be in assessing those properties, but then every property that is tax-exempt in a municipality would count toward what that municipality would get in terms of a portion of that funding. The funding would be prorated, so if the municipalities, if you took all the municipalities' tax-exempt properties, and at the rate that they were taxing, the county included, if there was more money than that that was available, they would get 110% of whatever that value was, or 120%. If there was less, they would get, you know, 90% or 80% of that value. But the reality is, you know, just as an example, you know, Northampton County would get $55.56 million roughly. And so the, I think the big difference, if I could, between the bill that you referenced, which deals with the Johnstown flood tax, I think the Johnstown flood tax generates a couple hundred million dollars a year.
No, it's much more than that. It actually generates, what was our last, I don't know about, I think it's getting close to a billion, but not quite there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. You know, this bill generates $2.45 billion. So it really has the opportunity, without taking money from another source, it has the opportunity to generate dollars. You know, I got a call from a cog up in the northwestern part of the state that said, you know, when is this passing? And I said, you know, no clue. But they said, well, we would, we think we would generate, it would generate around $500,000 for us, and that would solve all our problems. I mean, in some small municipalities, $500,000 is a big chunk of money.
Oh, yeah.
And so the ability for this to alleviate tax increases and actually pay for services that currently aren't being provided, we know that there's issues with fire and emergency services and police and things like that. This has the opportunity to help local municipalities pay for all of that.
Thank you. Yeah, I should note, too, with my legislation, House Bill 451, which I'm hoping we'll bring up at some point in this session, we discovered very early on how some municipalities are just absolutely hamstrung by the amount of tax-exempt properties. In my own hometown of Easton, about 27% of all assessed value is tax-exempt because of the county courthouse, Lafayette College, numerous nonprofits. The poster child for tax-exempt property is probably Gettysburg. We had a hearing down there on my legislation numerous sessions ago, and somewhere in the neighborhood of 80% of the total value of property was tax-exempt in the borough of Gettysburg. The mayor of Gettysburg, who lived in a modest, middle-class home, paid more in real estate taxes in his borough than the Walmart located in the township outside of town. So it really does skew the process of what a good value is and how to compensate people. So whether it's your bill or my bill that advances, I think we would be wise to try and address this issue. It's been festering for so long.
Thank you.
Sure. Representative Rader, you had a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chairman. In my county where I live, our issues are property taxes for the schools. So we don't really have a county tax issue, although those taxes are going up, or a municipality tax issue. It's really about the schools. This doesn't address any kind, so any kind of tax increase that I would desire in my county has to deal with a school issue because I can't be for a tax shift like a 1% here, then it wouldn't be there in the future for property tax relief for schools if I spent it already.
Right.
So this doesn't deal with the property tax issue for schools at all.
Does not deal with the property tax issue for schools, and as a matter of fact, this bill, a form of this bill, actually passed the House about 14 years ago and got sidetracked because Representative Scavelo, at the time, from your area, changed it so it did something for schools.
Yeah.
We now have a mechanism, the Basic Ed Funding Commission put out a mechanism by which schools can and will be funded moving forward. And so that is a separate issue from the local municipalities with the tax-exempt properties.
Not for my county, because we don't trust the formula and what we're going to get from that. We don't know what we're going to get. You know, there's, supposedly, we're supposed to get something. We were short-changed for years, so we don't know. So if you live in my area, adding a tax that doesn't include school property taxes is an issue. And the other part of it I don't like, because we don't trust or represent our people who run government either, is the way I read it says here, "voter referendum or an ordinance by the county commissioner." So the county could do it on their own without an ordinance?
Yes.
That's scary for me. Any tax increase that's new and above something that's been done before, I think, should be voted on by the people. If it was just a voter referendum, if they want it, I'm good with that. But a wayward Board of Commissioners deciding, hey, we're going to tax these people, maybe I'm not running again. You have a board that's not running, and we're going to tax, we're going to do this because we like it. The heck with what the people think. So I don't like that aspect of it either. A question I had, two of the hospitals are tax-exempt, correct? So how would you value a hospital? I would think that would be an astronomical number, would suck the tax base toward whoever has the hospitals. How would you evaluate a hospital?
Well, there are private hospitals that pay taxes.
Right, but there are some that don't.
There are for-profit hos, so how do you assess hospitals? The same way you assess a for-profit hospital.
Okay, that would be a big number, and then the.
Yes, it is a big number. It also, it also requires a lot of services.
Right.
So those services are paid by the citizens that live in a small community.
Right.
And that hospital generally serves a much broader area.
Well, you can look at it the other way, too. You'd say, well, I'm taxing a more rural area, maybe has some businesses, I'm taxing them heavily, and the money's going toward the hospital where they don't live or use that service. So you can look at it both ways. But for my particular county, having a tax that the people don't vote on is a problem, and having a tax that doesn't go toward schools is a problem.
Yeah. So I'm amenable to having it be by referendum only. I think particularly in a place like Monroe County, where the majority of sales tax is generated by people from outside the county because it's a tourist area, I would guess that the majority of people in Monroe County would vote for this, hands down.
They would not if it doesn't go to the schools.
Okay. All right.
Chairman James?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Sterla, I think I know the answer to this question, but can you confirm to me what is subject to this, what items and services are subject to this tax, please?
Everything that's currently subject to sales tax in the state of Pennsylvania. It would follow the same model that's used by Allegheny and Philadelphia counties right now.
Thank you. Any further questions? Just one from the chair. I know in the past, one of the, I wouldn't call it a negative, but one of the objections to the idea of an optional sales tax is what happens if you, your businesses are now competing with a neighboring county where the sales tax isn't levied? Or even a neighboring state, as in my case, it'd be New Jersey, which would have a different sales tax.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah. Look at Allegheny County and Philadelphia did it. Anybody not, do people drive out of Philadelphia to save 2-cent sales tax? They don't drive out of Allegheny County to save 1-cent sales tax. They don't drive across to Delaware where there's, you know, no sales tax, you know, for the majority of items, the majority of items that people buy. And when people come as tourists to Lancaster County, for example, they don't say, ah, you know what? I'll, I'll visit you during the day, I'm not going to buy anything, and then I'm going to drive 50 miles to get to Delaware so I can sleep there at night, and then I'm going to come back the next. It doesn't happen. The 1-cent sales tax is a nominal, you know, sales tax that does not affect people's buying habits. If this was a 5-cent additional tax, maybe. But the 1-cent sales tax does not have the impact like that, as proven by what we've seen in Allegheny County and Philadelphia County.
Point well taken. Thank you. At this point, we're going to move on to one of our first testifiers, County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, Frank Mazza. If you'd step forward. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Let me just get prepared here. All right.
For the record, Representative Donahue's on leave, and Representative Sapi is with us. You may begin.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Chairman Freeman, Chairman James, members of the Local Government Committee. Certainly want to echo my appreciation for the opportunity to be here this morning. Again, my name is Frank Mazza. I am the Director of Government Relations for the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. We represent all 67 counties across the Commonwealth. And we want to express, again, our appreciation for having the opportunity to be here today to discuss and comment on House Bill 678, and an issue that counties have long been discussing and seeking support from the legislature for, and that's talking about, you know, providing counties with, you know, optional tax opportunities to, you know, release the burden on county property taxpayers across the Commonwealth. So happy to be here, happy to be part of this discussion, and certainly hope that we can continue these discussions going forward. As I noted, counties have long called for local taxing options to reduce their reliance on the property tax, which is the sole source, a primary source for nearly all locally-generated tax revenues for counties. And we believe that House Bill 678 represents a good starting point for ongoing discussions around what has been a long, long time a county priority. It is important to note that while this bill is a step in the right direction, counties believe that it is time for the legislature to come to the table to more broadly discuss diversifying tax options for counties. And I say that because right now, effectively, what's happening is counties are putting all of their eggs into one basket, which, you know, is a necessity because, again, the only choice that we have is to levy property taxes on tax, property owners to generate local tax revenue. This, of course, is a heavy burden on property taxpayers to fund critical services such as public safety, election administration, and human services, just to name a few. I often quip that it's much easier for me nowadays to list the number of things that counties aren't involved in these days than it is to list all the things that we are involved in. But that being said, you know, we have long sought relief from the legislature in order to provide counties with these tax options, such as a sales tax, earned income tax, or personal income tax, which would allow counties to maximize the strengths and weaknesses of our respective local economies and the demographics, and ultimately decide which revenues were the best fit for our communities. Our hope is here today that we can leave here with a renewed commitment to looking at what true property tax reform that provides counties options to diversify our tax bases and relieve the burden on our property taxpayers, which is long overdue. Specific to House Bill 678, I think it would be helpful to start with a few broad, primary goals that counties would have in mind, that we've long been talking about internally amongst counties and within our association, and that our members often discuss when talking about property tax reform and opportunities for optional tax diversification options. The first is, counties have long held that if we're the ones to be responsible for authorizing or levying a tax, that we should be able to benefit from all of the revenue, or at least a substantial portion of it. Second, and equally as important, is that counties should be provided the flexibility in how revenues could be spent to offset existing tax burdens and fund a broad array of services. Again, to reiterate, House Bill 678 is a positive step towards advancing property tax reform that includes counties. I will note that there are several areas in this bill which, you know, counties would like to continue the discussion on, as I provide in my written testimony, so I won't go into much length here at this time on those. But again, to reiterate, counties appreciate the renewed interest that the legislature has in property tax reform discussions, and certainly, again, being recognized as a necessary part of these conversations. We look forward to continuing the work with Chairman Sterla and his, and his staff to develop and refine this legislation so that it can truly provide counties with new ways to address revenue challenges and fund services by adding more options to their tax base. So with that, I certainly appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here and provide a few brief remarks, and happy to, again, answer any questions as time permits.
Thank you for your testimony. I know, Chairman James, you had a comment or question? Oh, Mr. Rader.
I'm logging all the questions, sorry.
That's okay.
I do, I do agree with you in the county, because the biggest tax we have is the school tax, the next biggest tax is the county tax, of course, and they're always struggling with their budget. So I do agree with you on that part of it. If this bill was focused on letting the county tax and using it for the benefit of the whole county, I think I would probably be forced something like that, as long as it wasn't a referendum. So that would alleviate some of your concerns. I just don't like it to focus on certain aspects of it. I like to help the counties as a whole. I think that would be a better bill.
Well, and I think that goes to Representative, part of my, you know, my thoughts and comments is that, you know, the conversation, I think, needs to be more broadly, talking about tax reform. For many years, you know, of course, this predates my time with, with the association, but, you know, recognizing that school property tax reform has long been, I think, the primary focus of conversations. And I know in past sessions, within the last 10, 12, 14 years, there had been different iterations of different taxing options for counties, but a lot of the focus of the legislature has been on school property tax reform. And I think that's certainly an important conversation to have, and I think that goes to the point that we would like to see, which is a more comprehensive conversation around this. So I know that this bill in particular doesn't address school property taxes, but I think that goes, right, yep.
Chairman James?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mazza, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I want to piggyback on Representative Rader's question, former testifier, prime sponsor. Where does CCAP stand on the issue of referendum versus county commissioner action?
So I don't know that at this point we would necessarily have a particular preference. I think that's something we can continue the conversation on. I, you know, have not seen any indication from our members that they would have one preference, one way or another. Obviously, the, the thought that would come into commissioner's mind is, is, you know, when they're thinking about this tax is, you know, ultimately, you know, they're the ones who are going to be responsible for taking the vote to at least proceed to it. And, you know, the, we'll say scrutiny that could come along from the public on that, you know, is being borne by them. So I think, you know, whatever options are available to commissioners to, I think, have public involvement would certainly be helpful. And again, without necessarily saying here today, we choose one way or another, you know, we are happy to continue the conversation on that and include that going forward.
Unless I'm misconstruing some of the features of the bill, perhaps a reasonable compromise might be to allow the county commissioners to take a vote to put it to referendum. That way you get the best of both worlds. It's a possibility. Are you making notes, Mike? Okay, good. I'm sorry. Barowski, I believe you had a question?
Thank you very much for your testimony today. I appreciate it. So I'm still kind of absorbing everything within the legislation, but I just have a question, and this may not have any impact, but what about municipalities that are basically funded by, in addition to property taxes, Act 511 taxes? Would this have any impact? I'm just wondering if, you know, and adding a 1% sales tax, if that's a concern when it comes to, you know, these businesses working to generate revenue? And that is how, you know, I have a municipality of the first class, they are funded in that way in my, in my district. So I'm just wondering how that, how those play together.
Representative, I appreciate the question. I, to be, to be fair, I haven't given that much thought, so that's something I think certainly we could take a look at and have conversations and follow up with you on that if, if that would be appropriate. We'd be happy to do that. Yeah, that certainly is not something that we had taken under consideration at this point, but happy to get back to you on it. Thank you.
Just one follow-up before we let you go. If I understood Chairman Sterla's testimony, too, for the purposes of driving some of the sales tax into municipalities with high tax exempts, all tax-exempt properties, that the county would be considered as municipality for the purposes of reimbursement. So to your earlier point that the county should have probably a bigger chunk of something coming out of this, would that not satisfy that concern?
So I certainly think there's flexibility there for us, and this is one of the things that I think we, we, in our prior conversations with Chairman Sterla, internally, when we've talked about this, certainly, you know, our members, you know, have long held that, you know, they should see the, at least the bulk. And I think the way that this is set up in the bill, you know, we could certainly discuss, you know, how to clarify it to ensure that counties, you know, are comfortable with what, what portion of the revenues would, would come back to them. And I think certainly that we're willing to be more flexible with, you know, an all-or, you know, all-or-nothing approach. So I think that there's, there's wiggle room there.
Okay. Very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next testifier is Amy Sturgis, Deputy Executive Director for Advocacy for the Pennsylvania Municipal League and the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. All right. On behalf of the Pennsylvania Municipal League and the State Association of Township Commissioners, thank you for the invitation to testify today. I am Amy Sturgis, Deputy Executive Director for Advocacy. And together, the municipal membership of the league and the PSATC represent over 200 full-service core communities serving over 5 million Pennsylvanians. I am confident in saying that all of our members believe local taxation in Pennsylvania needs an overhaul. In fact, modernization of the municipal taxing structure is a longstanding legislative priority for both organizations. The revenue tools available to cities, boroughs, and townships were developed in the 1960s. As you know, much has changed in the administration of local government in the last 60 years. The revenue tools available to cities, boroughs, and townships were developed in the 1960s. As you know, much has changed in the administration of local government in the last 60 years. For instance, the service-owned and evolved expenses, and with that, expenses have naturally increased. Technology is more sophisticated and needs to be updated regularly. The population has shifted away from older urban cores, leaving fewer people to pay for the same level of services. The housing stock in the urban core has also aged, and frequent unfunded mandates from federal and state government create more costs that are passed along to the tax-paying residents and businesses. Despite these changes, the way local government services are funded has remained largely unchanged, with the property tax and the earned income tax making up the bulk of local revenue. It is not uncommon for expenses to outpace revenue. For many of Pennsylvania citizens, the archaic property tax is a burden that makes it a challenge to both pay the tax and maintain their biggest asset, their home. This is especially true in older, full-service municipalities where higher property taxes, often at the maximum allowable rate, are common. First-time homeowners, senior citizens, and low-income families are particularly impacted by this regressive tax levied by three separate levels of local government. The EIT is less regressive, levied on workers' income and capped at 1% of earned income. This tax is shared equally with the school district if the district chooses to levy the tax. There is some revenue growth with the EIT, but it is minimal, especially when shared. The inability to levy the tax at a higher rate, the inability to levy a rate higher than the combined 1% tax is frustrating to many municipalities. Only if a municipality is distressed or has a distressed pension plan is it allowed to increase its earned income tax above the cap. Home rule municipalities also have this option, but the lengthy and confusing process to become home rule is a significant drawback for many entertaining that avenue to raise the cap. When these outdated taxing options stop covering the cost of providing today's services, local officials are faced with a precarious balancing act of poor choices: raise taxes and risk chasing away current and future residents, or cut services and risk chasing away current and future residents. These options are untenable when trying to foster safe, attractive communities that young professionals and families want to call home. As advocates for a more modern and flexible local taxing structure, the league and PSATC support the concept of a 1% option sales tax. I'll also add here that there are other options, other flexibilities, that we would like to see, but we do support this concept. In 2009, we worked extensively with Representative Sterling and the other associations to move legislation similar to House Bill 678 forward. We welcome the opportunity to revisit the local taxing structure and the concept of a 1% sales tax, shared by the county and its municipalities. The sales tax is based on consumption and grows with local, state, and national economies. Raising municipal revenue via a county option sales tax provides a broader base and allows everyone in the county to benefit from the economic activity across the region. House Bill 678 distributes the revenue based on the assessed value of tax-exempt property, and this formula is a reasonable approach that will direct the revenue to municipalities with higher amounts of tax-exempt property, which usually signals higher property taxes, shouldered by the residents and businesses that do pay taxes. In previous versions of the legislation, to receive the distribution of sales tax revenue, municipalities were required to pass a resolution expressing support for the county's intention to levy the tax. This version does not require municipal support. We continue to support municipalities taking affirmative action to support their county's levy as a precursor to receiving a distribution of the revenue generated. As stated earlier, the revenue distribution formula drives the revenue where it's needed most. Further, the bill requires all distributed revenue to be used for specific expenditures. Municipalities must use the revenue to first pay the minimum municipal obligation on moderately and severely distressed pension plans, or if their plans are minimally distressed or fully funded, the revenue can go to supporting core services or reducing the property tax rate. We support the requirement to put all of the tax revenue toward these specific municipal expenditures. Funding core services is always needed, and covering the MMO costs both frees up funds for services and allows for property tax rate reductions. As we know, the levy of an additional sales tax in Philadelphia and Allegheny County has been in existence for some time. The additional revenue has benefited these counties without causing an undue burden. We would advocate for Allegheny County and its municipalities to have access to this additional 1% tax, to be used as outlined in this legislation, or to follow the already established formula for the county's regional asset district. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not point to the excellent work of the Pennsylvania Economy League in outlining the need for a new approach to local revenue in its publication. It's not 1965 anymore. I urge you, as members of the House Local Government Committee, to review this publication and the eight case studies that demonstrate the vast differences across the Commonwealth in municipal revenue needs, and how the 1960s approach is no longer a viable option. In closing, thank you to Representative Sterling for reintroducing this legislation, and thank you to Chairman Freeman and Chairman James for holding this hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Just one on a sort of hypothetical level, too. Counties, in many respects, are sort of the only form of regional government that we really have in Pennsylvania. But that being said, there are areas of the state that probably encompass a bigger metropolitan area. I'm thinking of my own Lehigh Valley. Typically, when you say the Lehigh Valley, you mean Lehigh County and Northampton County. And this is maybe something to ask Representative Sterling to address at some point in today's hearing. What are your thoughts about the idea of two counties coming together to share an optional 1% sales tax? I think in the Lehigh Valley, the biggest commercial entity is probably the Lehigh Valley Mall. And yet, the people of Whitehall Township are not the only people who shop there.
Sure.
It's a regional mall and has regional impact.
I think it would be great if there was flexibility in the legislation that would allow that, yeah.
And I know that, in the case of, I believe it's Minneapolis, they have a metro government that shares revenue, and a portion of the tax levied on all commercial and industrial properties gets into a metro pot that is shared out by all municipalities. Residential taxes, real estate taxes, stay within the residing municipality, but commercial and industrial have a portion always going towards that metro base.
It's important to start looking at taxation regionally, because we don't stay in the same municipality all day long. We move around quite a bit, and some areas of a region receive that benefit of shopping, et cetera. But the whole region benefits from that area. So I think it would be wonderful to have more discussion about.
At least an option to be considered.
Yes, absolutely.
Representative Rader?
Once again, I hate taxation, no.
Without representation.
Exactly. Chairman, you brought up exactly what I'm thinking, sitting here, and the one tax that no one complains about in Monterey County is the township tax. It's so low, no one cares about. So we're focusing on a few little bits of taxation. I think it's hard to focus on a piece of taxation when we need broader reform, and maybe, you know, this is the piece of that, but without the broader reform, we're just hitting a small sliver of it. You know, I agree with it, the county needs property, they need tax reform also, and that's where a bill is a concern. But this is only a piece of that. If we just do a piece at a time, it might not add up properly. So I think maybe we need to take a broader approach to tax reform, both in the county level, the township level, and the school district level. I think that would be a better way of doing it, because we're trying to do a little piece at a time, and then maybe the puzzle won't fit, because we've done it the wrong way.
Your point is well taken. I would note, though, on behalf of Representative Sterling, that there is a, there is a real need in the municipal level for some sort of compensation for having a lot of tax-exempt properties. My bill, which, again, I mentioned will be at some point brought up in the committee, House Bill 451, in the, doing the research for that legislation, I really came to realize how burdensome tax-exempt properties can be to a very small community, like Gettysburg, for instance. And they have no other means of relief at this point, but point well taken. Any other questions for Amy Sturgis?
Thank you.
Chairman James?
Just trying to keep up with Mr. Rader. So I'm.
You both realize that per diems don't get distributed based on the amount of comment and committee.
Oh, really? I'm trying to think operationally at this point. Does DCED or any other office of this government actually have any kind of records on the tax-exempt properties across the Commonwealth? I know of none, but maybe you do.
I don't. I think there would be definitely a challenge for the counties initially to assess the tax-exempt property that's within them, but once it's done the first time, you know, it's, you know, that information is then available. And I don't think that our membership would have any difficulty making sure the counties have, you know, can take the administrative costs of that assessment from the initial share.
With any of the other, I'm sorry.
From the initial share, because it will be costly, it will be a lot of work for the counties to initially assess and figure out a value for these tax-exempt properties.
I believe you are 100% correct. Does any other testifier have an opinion or a thought on this issue, or Mr. Sterling? Representative Sterling?
So, as I pointed out earlier, the counties would be reimbursed for that assessment initially. And, again, any property that is currently tax-exempt, if it gets sold, whether to another tax-exempt entity, or whether to a for-profit, a value is assigned to that when it's sold. We just did it in Lancaster County, where the library moved. There was an old library building. What's an old library building worth? Well, guess what? It was $3.4 million, because when you convert it to something else, it's worth $3.4 million. And so establishing that within a county, understand that assessments are done within counties. So for this purpose of this bill, all the money that goes back out stays within each county. So while my county may assess slightly differently than the next county over, that's irrelevant of how much money that county got as a portion of their share, because it's what was generated in that county in terms of taxes. So now, once I've established that, for example, Lancaster County gets $100 million, whether I do a bad job of assessment or a good job of reassessment, once I do the assessment, it is consistent within that county, and so whether I have a 30, municipality's got 30% tax-exempt, and somebody else has a municipality that's got 3% tax-exempt, it is based on the same assessment within that county, and is completely devoid of any relationship to the next county over as to how they did their reassessment. So it really is, it's a way, it is a fair way within a county. And the only reason that I use the county mechanism is because while counties don't collect sales taxes, when the state collects sales tax, it is apportioned on a county-wide basis. It is from where, whence that was generated. And so the Department of Revenue has those statistics, and I want to sit down with them and get, because there's questions about companies that have a parent company outside a county, and they do, there's various little things that they know how to do. They've done it with Allegheny County, they've done it with Philadelphia County. But within the county, it is a fair mechanism, because all of those properties that are then going to be divvied up in terms of how much you get as your share of this, are going to be assessed by the same assessment.
Take that one step further for me, please. Let's use the sample of Monroe County. I'm not familiar with what all is there, but apparently, it gets a lot of visitation. What if they create a vast pool of money, much more than is needed to cover their properties, their tax-exempt properties? Where does that vast amount of money go, if not back to Monroe County?
It goes to the county. It stays in the county. It goes to the municipalities and the county as their share. And so Monroe County, I believe, would generate $35 million a year. That's $35 million a year that gets split between municipalities and the county in Monroe County. And so the part that's harder, now, you could say, well, you know what? The county's going to get 50% of that money, and the municipalities are going to get 50% of that money. But that's an arbitrary sort of decision to make. It could be done. What I've said is, the county's going to get their portion of the dollars for the total value of tax-exempt properties times their current taxation rate. And the municipalities are going to get their share based on the value of the properties within their municipality times their current municipal tax rate, because, as was pointed out, some municipalities that have high tax-exempt properties usually have higher taxes, and so they're missing out on those revenues. Now, as you move forward each year, those municipalities hopefully will lower their tax rate, which means they're going to get a little less of that pie, but it's still going to stay within the county. It's still going to, everybody's going to get their share of it within the county. I mean, the ultimate would be if everybody could lower all their taxes, and everybody says, hey, we're getting 100% of our taxes covered by this, you know, thing. It depends. My guess is, there's not enough money there at one cent to cover every county and municipality's taxes. But there's going to be enough to cover at least the cost of what the tax-exempt properties would have generated. But the tax-exempt properties are just a measure by which you distribute the money. It doesn't go back, the money doesn't go back then to the tax-exempt property itself. It stays in the municipality or the county.
I yield.
Are there any more questions for Amy? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, Ron Gruzza.
Thank you, Chairman Freeman, Chairman James, and members of the House Local Government Committee. Thank you very much for the invitation today to present our perspectives on House Bill 678, the county optional sales tax. As Chairman Freeman said, my name's Ron Gruzza, Senior Director of Government Affairs at the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. PSAB has been around for over 100 years, representing the interests of over 950 borough communities across the Commonwealth. Also, we have thousands of locally elected borough officials and also appointed officials, which we represent. They strive every day to provide municipal services to their communities, and we're very proud to represent them. The issue of how we fund our municipalities has always been one of the top concerns of the Association. Of course, as was already reiterated by Amy Sturgis, of the different types of taxes which our members have at their option, we do support looking at a diversification of that tax base. You know, currently, the drivers are the municipal property tax, earned income tax, local services tax. We think that certainly the time is right to look at some other options when it comes to funding municipal services. You know, currently, the emergency services, as was mentioned before, that is becoming a huge cost driver, whether it's police or supporting volunteer fire companies, supporting EMS is becoming a really big cost driver to our members. So, you know, in a lot of our, in some of our communities, there is that pressure to generate enough revenue and be able to provide these quality services that our citizens have become accustomed to. So the issue of tax-exempt properties is also another priority for many years that our members, I know Chairman Freeman has been to our conference many times, and hears this from our members as one of our big priorities. You know, Chairman Freeman did mention about Gettysburg having that huge rate of tax-exempt properties. Clarion Borough also in the same boat, 70% tax-exempt. Clarion Borough also in the same boat, 70% tax-exempt properties. So, when you start off with that huge amount of properties which are off the books, you can't tax, you're really behind the eight ball. That means higher taxes for elderly property owners, you know, and certainly some of the other things are limited. So, we need some relief for those communities, of course. We don't want to be put in a position where we're going to have to cut services. And of course, these tax-exempt properties, they are an asset to our communities, but they're also getting services, municipal services from the, from the borough. So, we have to find a way to somehow recoup and give a little bit more revenue to the As I mentioned in the, in the written testimony, this has been something that the 1% county optional sales tax has been something that we've supported over the years. From way back to 1988, the Local Tax Reform Act, of course, that was defeated on voter referendum. Certainly, the Rendell administration, when we worked with Chairman Sterling, PSAB was fully supportive of that. And really, you know, it just comes down to giving more options and more flexibility to counties and municipalities in terms of funding their operations. That's really what it comes down to. And of course, we do support Chairman Freeman's House Bill 451. You know, and I, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention about how other states do allow for a local sales tax. You know, when I'm traveling, I see that on, on my receipt, that there is a, there's a little portion for the county that, that is taken out, somewhat similar to what's in Allegheny County. So, certainly, other states are doing it. Allegheny County and Philadelphia are doing it as well. We just think that this is the, a natural progression, progression which would work very well. Of course, we do support House Bill 678. Just a few recommendations, which I mentioned in the written testimony. I know the, the voter referendum has been bandied about here this morning. The way that I read it, it was mandatory for a voter referendum. In other versions, there wasn't a voter referendum. We would support just having it at, having the county enact an ordinance. Certainly, municipal support would be good, having a municipality to qualify to receive revenue, to pass a resolution. I think that that would be good as well. Or just leave it up to the county to have an option to take that vote and just put it out for a referendum. That's also an option. The county versus the municipal share, I think that now I sort of understand where Chairman Sterling is going with it. You know, I would, somewhat similar to previous versions of it, have maybe a 50-50 split. That, that certainly would relieve the county of having any type of, being a part of the distribution formula. But certainly, that could be clarified. The third suggestion that I made was for municipal allocation. Just the suggestion of maybe having it not, not be 100% on tax-exempt properties, the number of tax-exempt properties you have, the percentage, but you can keep that as part of the, the way that you drive it out, the formula. But also, you want to look at something which is maybe tax effort. There was in previous versions, and I put it down there, is you want to be able to capture the total tax revenues in the municipality from all sources divided by the ratio of the per capita market value in the municipality as a ratio to the total per capita market values in the whole county. And what that's going to do is, and I'm glad Chairman Freeman, you brought up about Minneapolis, because that is a regional tax, which is then shared to the municipalities, and their funding formula is sort of similar to that, and it's going to get the communities which are much more in need. They're high taxed, low property values, and those are the ones that are really need. So I would just throw that out there as, you know, to a suggestion. And was, was mentioned before about the pensions, too. That's, that certainly is important as well. You know, we do have, we do have municipal state aid, of course. So I think that this could help to, to benefit that, that huge cost driver as well. Maybe just put that in as an allowable use, too, because if some municipality doesn't have any type of distress under Act 205, just that they could use the revenue from the 1% for pensions as well. So in closing, I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to share our perspectives on House Bill 678 and look for, and urge you to support it, move it along, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next testifier is Brian Renegert from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Freeman, Chairman James, members of the House Local Government Committee. Thank you very much for having us here. My name is Brian Renegert. I am the Deputy Director of Government Relations at PSAT, the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. We represent over 5.7 million Pennsylvanians. Second-class townships cover approximately 95% of the landmass in Pennsylvania. So on behalf of our 1,454 members, thank you very much for having us here. I also would like to say thank you to those who attended our annual conference two weeks ago in Hershey. We had over 4,000 attendees. Representative Sappi participated in a panel, and thank you very much for your, your time and effort on that. I will be brief, because I think a lot of our points were already highlighted, and it certainly is, is in the testimony. But municipalities are charged with providing, you know, many vital services to the communities that communities need to thrive. Fire, police, EMS, roads, water, sewer, parks. However, the responsibilities and costs, while the responsibilities and costs continue to rise, townships of the second class, as others have mentioned, continue to be very limited in their revenue, revenue streams, and in fact, see some of our revenue streams decline. You know, we, we rely a lot on liquid fuels dollars for our roads and transportation needs. Those are decreasing. I know that is another issue, but I bring that up just to say that we are very hamstrung in what we are able to, to do to address a lot of these issues. And property taxes also remain the, the main revenue source for our municipalities. Tax-exempt properties reduce revenue on our members, reduce the revenue our members can collect, but often increase the level of service, especially public safety services. PSAT does support House Bill 678 and the effort to provide a local option for offsetting revenue lost from tax-exempt properties. It is also worth noting that some of our members have seen land in their township moved off the tax rolls when DCNR, PA Game Commission, and Land Trust come in. Representative James had a conversation with one of your supervisors in Manango County, who said 80% of their municipality is, you know, undevelopable, undevelopable, and therefore untaxable, because it's tied up in some sort of land preservation. So, I think that's also important to note. And while we do receive payment in lieu of taxes for some of these lands, and those dollars have increased over the years, it's still dollars, only a few dollars, and does not fully replace tax revenue that has been lost. PSAT would welcome a much larger conversation about tax reform and additional revenue options, as, as many others have stated. And as I think Chairman, or Representative Rader said, not many folks complain about municipal taxes because they're so low. You know, Section 3205 of the Second Class Township Code is very specific in the type of taxes, the tax rates and types of taxes that we can levy and provide. The current system requires local governments to rely on the property tax, which has been shown time and time again to be unfair and burden those with limited income. Part of the problem is that three local taxing jurisdictions, the municipalities, the school districts, and the counties all must rely on the same property tax base for a major portion of their revenue. In addition to 678, we would recommend looking at additional menu options, like repealing the Sterling Act, authorizing a hotel occupancy tax for municipalities. You know, those are folks who do not live in the municipality. They come in and they visit, but they still require services. They use the roads, they may use fire, EMS, police, emergency services. We would also like to look at removing some of the caps on special purpose taxes allowed under 3205. We are currently limited to a half a mil for EMS. We are current, limited to a five mils for fire. Those are two big crises that folks are, are facing. And then we would also support modernizing the state's assessment system to ensure that assessed values are determined fairly. You know, some counties have not reassessed their property values in decades, which in turn, it makes it difficult for our municipalities when they are very, if they are already at their maximum cap, cap of millage, and assessed values are 10, 20, 30 years old. You know, finally, PSAT opposes the, the granting of, of special exemptions for, from for-tax, for-profit companies. You know, sometimes there are carve-outs for different for-ta, for-profit entities that are exempt from our taxes. So we would encourage also looking at that as an overall reform effort. So, thank you very much. Certainly happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Chairman James? Just out of curiosity, since Representative Sterling and myself both have legislation geared towards compensating municipalities for high percentages of tax-exempt property, have you seen a trend emerge over the years where townships are now getting a bigger percentage of tax-exempt properties? And the reason I raise that, I know in my own Lehigh Valley, there are two health networks, St. Luke's and Lehigh Valley Health Network. And they're very successful health operations from a financial standpoint, and yet they are still considered to be tax-exempt. And it seems that one of the ways in which they, I don't want to say high, but at least reinvest their profits, is by building more and more clinics and, and offices and things in the suburbs that end up being part of their network, but also begs the question as to how tax-exempt they really are.
Sure. And I, I can't speak specifically to that with data, but, you know, anecdotally can say, I think as we all have seen, yes, more and more hospitals and health facilities pop up in our, in our own backyards. So I think you're certainly not wrong on taking a look at that. And certainly, we've seen in our more rural areas, you have more lands eaten up by, or taken over by state game land and, and different parks and, and things like that. So, while those are great resources to have and do oftentimes attract, you know, people to their community, it is also, we have to provide services for those folks that, that are attracted to the region. So, it is certainly a balancing operation.
And I do appreciate your comments about game land and other DCNR lands as well. And in fact, my legislation, I believe, addresses that in terms of distribution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next testifier is, let's see, Vinny Canizero, Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Economy League.
Thank you, everyone. Chairman Freeman, Chairman James, Representative Sterling, members of the Local Government Committee, thank you for inviting me today. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone. My name is Vinny Canizero. I am the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Economy League. The Pennsylvania Economy League is an over 85-year nonprofit, nonpartisan, public policy research organization dedicated to supporting local governments, school districts, and nonprofit organizations throughout the Commonwealth through independent and data-driven information insights. PEL supports good government and policies, positive policy action by providing technical assistance, independent research, and civic education. As you are all aware, local and municipal governments are at the heart of many policy challenges facing the Commonwealth as well as the solutions. In our report, it's not 1965 anymore, state tax laws fail to meet municipal revenue needs. Previous report published by the Pennsylvania Economy League and supported by our good friends at the Municipal League, our team delved into the intricacies of revenue limitations local governments must work under in acquiring and sustaining reliable revenue streams. Through our in-depth and rigorous technical assistance provided to municipalities of all sizes and types throughout Pennsylvania, PEL continuously sees a stagnation of revenue while expenses and the cost of delivering reliable, consistent, and necessary services continues to rise. Many municipalities throughout Pennsylvania have maxed out the revenue streams. They're tethered to a variety of tax limitations, creating environments that can lead to economic and financial distress. While negatively impacting governments and governmental structures, it also creates barriers to the ability of residents to have their needs adequately met. In short, municipal governments throughout Pennsylvania need assistance and need alternative pathways to provide for more tax flexibility, and HB 678 is one pathway to a new revenue stream. By creating an optional local sales, or an optional sales tax levied by and codified by county governments and providing direct revenue to those relevant municipalities, HB 678 has the potential of not only relieving some of the stress placed on local governments, but can also relieve the property tax burden placed on residents. For many municipal governments and certainly county governments, property taxes remains the largest source of income. However, assessments of property tax, for property tax purposes are executed on a piecemeal county-by-county basis and remain an inconsistent revenue stream. More importantly, as the costs of goods and services provided by municipalities rise, property taxes do not mirror the natural state of growth, leading to further stagnation. Other taxes, including the earned income tax, have the ability to grow and expand as economic conditions change. And while PEL cannot provide definitive results, it is our assumption that based on data from the Department of Revenue, that an optional sales tax would generally reflect market conditions and follow economic growth as well. Without increased tax flexibility or diversified revenue streams, some municipalities cannot sustain the totality of their services. The quality and overall degree of services currently provided will in short, will in short order be negatively impacted by an inconsistent revenue stream. And we're considering core services. I would like to focus on public safety, as many other folks have done today, specifically through the provision of police and fire. In conversations with elected officials, policymakers, residents regarding community members throughout Pennsylvania, fire and police are often at the core of what residents expect from local governments. When an emergency arises, they expect to have someone answer the phone, they expect relevant personnel to respond accordingly. However, many departments are already at capacity. Some police departments have entered into agreements with neighboring municipalities to provide services. And conversely, fire, volunteer fire and EMS, EMS services are on the decline, putting additional stresses on an already strained system. Nevertheless, when a call is received regardless of agreements, if there is a need that will be unmet, municipalities will actively participate in mutual aid and provide those services to effective parties and residents. In these cases, the lack of services provided by neighboring municipalities creates unsustainable budgetary environments that perpetuates these inequities between municipalities and perpetuates a continued over-reliance on property tax revenue. In Appendix A of my testimony, of my written testimony, you will find some specific examples of municipalities providing mutual aid. But when overnight patrols are not available and an emergency occurs in the middle of the night, someone must respond, and sometimes those responses are not covered by individual police departments or fire company budgets. And this fragmentation of services is partially due to budgetary limitations facing municipalities. With this in mind, I would like to offer a recommendation for the bill. For many years, the Economy League has been an advocate for increased regionalization services. And by placing an explicit focus on regionalization, the state, individual counties, municipalities can actively ensure that core public safety services are fully funded or at full capacity and can meet the totality of residential and community needs. Through HB 678 and the codification of an optional sales tax, the decline of municipal services can potentially be reversed and can fund and grow opportunities within municipalities. By sharing resources and talent and collective efforts through regional cooperation, long-term costs may decrease and the overall quality of services may increase. Moreover, the use of an optional sales tax to create a steady, reliable, and annual source of income for regionalization efforts has the potential to decrease alternative tax burdens for all of those involved. As such, a county-initiated 1% optional sales tax has the potential to sow the seeds of municipal prosperity and create the conditions for local governments to grow, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Chairman James, you had a question, I believe, for Chairman Sterling?
Chairman Sterling?
Sure.
Will you sit for interrogation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, reference was made several times in your testimony to core services. So for my benefit, will you define for me what is a core service?
Yeah, I think it's defined in the bill. It deals with fire, EMS, police, provision of, you know, water and sewer if the municipal, if the municipality has control over that, sidewalks, you know, the kinds of things that I believe are generally understood as core services. However, I will say, if the committee says, well, you didn't have this one thing down there, or the Municipal League says, hey, you didn't have this one thing, can we include that? I'm amenable to any of those things being included. This is, this, the hope is that this bill will help municipalities, not limit municipalities. What I don't want to do, though, is say, hey, you got this money, go build yourself a new, you know, turf field athletic stadium in a town of 1,000 people, because it's, that's not a core service, you know? So I want to have some restrictions on it, so it's not, it doesn't just get, it's not like, hey, there's free money, I can spend it on anything I want to, and then, oops, I still didn't meet my pension obligations, I still didn't meet my core services, police, fire, those kinds of things. So again, I want to be as flexible without having it be frivolous. And so, really, I, and I don't want to, unfortunately, we always have to write legislation for the exception, not the rule. The rule is going to be 99% of the municipalities are going to spend it on what you and I think of as core services, police, fire, that kind of thing. I want to just make sure that the 1% doesn't go out and, you know, spend it on, you know, a festival every year. That's not a core service, you know?
Thank you very much.
To our testifier, just a question regarding tax-exempt property, and you're aware of my legislation, we've talked about it. In regards to my and my legislation and Representative Sterling's legislation, have we seen a drastic increase in tax-exempt properties within certain types of municipalities?
Yeah.
And what I'm thinking about is the older communities, small cities, boroughs?
Yeah, I can't, I can't point to specific municipalities at the moment, but based on 1996 numbers of tax-exempt properties and more current numbers that PEL and some of my staff have begun to run, we are seeing some relatively large shifts and changes. Some municipalities have had drops in the number of tax-exempt properties while others have substantially expanded. I will say, the list that I was provided with from 96 was 13 pages long. The list that we have now is 60-some-odd pages long, so there is significantly more municipalities that meet that 15% threshold that is in your bill.
In my bill. And I would imagine too, that as I referenced in my previous question, the growth of, for want of a better word, facilities, outlets for the nonprofit hospitals has probably contributed greatly to more tax-exempt properties in our surrounding communities.
I would assume, I would assume so, but you know, the numbers that we have are not specific to the types of nonprofit organizations. It is just overall tax exemption and the assessed and market values of those. But I mean, as municipalities grow, as services expand, we do see, we do see shifts in growth.
Yeah. And I would imagine too, just as a follow-up, that in a lot of our small cities, and particularly boroughs, they were once self-contained communities, they had a commercial core to them, they had industrial employment opportunities, it wasn't just a bedroom community. But probably with the loss of commercial properties to regional malls, industry loss to regional industrial parks, boroughs in particular have probably taken a hit with an increase or a decrease, actually, in certain types of tax ratables, leaving them mostly as a residential community with some measure of nonprofits.
Yeah, we are actively crunching the numbers, so I don't have specifics on the degree of tax-exempt properties by municipal type, but we will have those numbers in the near future.
Good. I know we're supposed to have a follow-up.
We are, yeah.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you both. Next is Mark Steer from the Pennsylvania Policy Center.
Chairman Freeman, Chairman James, thank you for inviting me to testify today. Let me start with two prefatory remarks. One is, I am, I do most of my work on federal and state government, I do not do very much work on local government. Other people here have spoken to the needs of local communities for additional funding for, and to the problem of nonprofits not paying property taxes. I defer to them, and I believe that what they said all makes sense to me, but I have no expertise there. I have a little expertise about taxation in general and some personal experience about the situation, one of the situations we're talking about that I want to share with you. Second prefatory remark is that I support this legislation. I want to say that upfront because I'm going to be critical of certain kinds of taxes, particularly sales taxes, and suggest alternatives to it. But every time, you know, you think about legislation, there's always a balance between some things that you want, some things you don't necessarily want. I would say that giving local communities, counties, municipalities, counties rather, an option to have a sales tax is perfectly reasonable, given the constraints they're under, and given that it is optional and not required, and they can make their individual judgments in those communities. Now, let me say something about the problem of tax-exempt properties. We know that they reduce the tax base in, for many municipalities and counties, but they don't do it in a way that's fair. Some municipalities and counties have few tax-exempt properties, others have more. And often, those tax-exempt properties serve communities beyond the community in which they're located. So there's basic unfairness to that. I wanted to tell a quick personal story exemplifying this because I've seen it. I grew up in Southern County in New York, right across the Pennsylvania border, which was the center of the famed Borscht Belt, a region in which there are hundreds of large and small hotels. As you can imagine, those hotels were the center of a vibrant economy. The population would increase four times in the summer, and all the little hamlets and villages and towns in that county had vibrant main streets. When the resort area declined in the 1970s, 80s, many hotels were sold, often to nonprofits such as religious institutions and social service agencies who could take advantage of those very large properties. The county, that, of course, took them off the tax rolls. The counties and towns responded by raising property taxes to incredibly high levels. By the time my sister and I sold the home we grew up in in Liberty, New York after my mother passed away, the taxes on the property were equal to the taxes on my house in Philadelphia, even though the house in the Catskills was valued at one-tenth of my, the house in Philadelphia. It's just, I mean, it was $11,000, $12,000 tax bill on a $60,000, property valued $60,000. Or some, that's rough, but it was just extraordinary. So I've seen this problem firsthand. This is a really difficult problem for many local communities and for the taxpayers in those communities, and I really appreciate that the burden this places on them. Having said that, I want to say that there could be better ways of addressing the problem. For example, the unfairness of the situation involves the whole state, as I mentioned. The distribution of nonprofits from county to county, from municipality to municipality is not, you know, fair, doesn't reflect the needs of those communities. So maybe the state should step in and provide some relief that's tied to nonprofits, provide some funds that's tied to the level of nonprofits in a community. And there might be better ways of raising funds than instituting a sales tax. In general, my organization does not support sales taxes or, does not support increasing them. Would like to see them reformed. The reason it's the most regressive tax of all the taxes levied in the state, and my testimony, there's a little chart that shows that the bottom 20% of families in the state pay 6.9% of their income in sales taxes. The top 1%, people making over $746,000 a year, pay 0.8% of their income in state and local taxes. Well, how's that possible? Well, first, those with higher incomes save far more of their income than those with moderate incomes, and people at the bottom don't save any income. So people at the bottom are paying a higher share of their income in sales taxes. Second, Pennsylvania's sales taxes includes many services from taxation, and as a family's income rises, they tend to purchase more services relative to goods. And third, among the services not taxed in Pennsylvania are most business services and luxury services such as swimming pool maintenance and cleaning, health club memberships, spa and massage services, and most entertainments and amusements, not to mention the sale of helicopters. I've never, I've always wondered where that exemption came from. So relying, relying on the sales tax to compensate for high property taxes may be a case of replacing one taxes especially burdensome to low and moderate Pennsylvanians with another that is just as burdensome. I would consider alternatives to the sales tax. For example, I think we should turn the earned income tax into a income tax, local communities taxed earned and under income. I think that there's always a fear, people say, well, business people are going to move, people with incomes are going to move if you tax their investment income. There's actually been a lot of studies that recently, and there's very little evidence that that happens. People are embedded in their communities, they're happy with their homes, you know, we have a higher rate of mobility in this country than anywhere else in the world, and it's still, you know, 5% of people move every year, something like that. It's very low. And rich people, as I said, are embedded in, their businesses are in local communities, their homes, their lives, their families. If one thought that still were a problem, one could create a statewide minimum, let every state, a county-wide minimum for the entire state, so that, so there wouldn't be competition, people moving from one county to another. They're certainly not going to move out of state because every state around us taxes rich people and upper-income people at far higher rates than we do because of our flat income tax. So that might be another way to go in dealing with this problem. But having said all that, let me return to my statement at the beginning. I think that we're dealing with a difficult circumstance. I realize the, some of the alternatives to it, state funding, extending the earned income tax to unearned income tax may not be politically feasible anytime soon. And given the nature of the problem, given that the county tax would be optional, we would support this bill despite our misgivings about sales taxes.
Chairman Sterling, do you want to make a comment?
On his testimony or? On his testimony or in general?
Related to his testimony, but you can take a broader approach.
Yeah, I mean, look, this is, the reason that I chose the sales taxes because it is generated within the state at a, and reported on a county-wide basis. And so if you take another tax and say, well, we're going to use a statewide income tax, and then we're going to send it to the counties based on their tax-exempt properties, again, you run into the situation of, well, if there's different assessment values and rates in, within the various counties, who gets what? If I say, if I, if my county says, hey, we want some of that state money, I'm going to assess the value of my not-for-profits or my tax-exempt properties really high because I can get a big windfall. And so you'd have to do a statewide assessment of the tax-exempt properties, whereas the way it is generated, since the sales tax is going to that county regardless of whether they say those tax-exempt properties are worth anything or not, then it's a matter of, it's, the distribution, the method for distribution is equalized within that county because of, when you assess within the county, it's an equalized assessment within the county as opposed to various assessments statewide. And because the current system within counties is that it varies greatly, like one assessed last month, one assessed 40 years ago, it's really hard to then say, so how do you equalize those rates and who gets what and where and how? And so, for simplification reasons, I basically chose the sales tax as the method by which this gets done so that there wasn't any inconsistency. It is, it is extremely consistent within each county then in terms of how that money gets distributed, and the amount that gets distributed is determined because we know already what gets reported from each county, you know, as coming into the state. So it was really a mechanism of fairness as to how the distribution occurred. I agree with his assessment, though, of, in general, sales taxes are not as fair as, say, an income tax. But it's, I think it's the fairest way to do what I'm trying to get accomplished.
Well, and we do have the distinction, at least, that some, some areas subject to tax by a sales tax in other states are not taxed here. Food, clothing, those basic necessities are exempt from the sales tax.
Right.
As they should be, yeah. Chairman James? Any questions?
No.
Thank you for your testimony. In regards to it too, you mentioned a state share, and again, returning to my legislation on tax-exempt property, that would utilize the 18% Johnstown flood tax to drive into those communities with high tax-exempt status. There is a threshold you'd have to meet at 15% as opposed to the universal, any, any tax-exempt property, but that's one way of possibly utilizing state funds to help address the problem as well.
Yes, that actually makes sense. I think Representative Sterling raises a problem for, for that suggestion as well as my suggestion, but I think the answer to the problem is, we should be fixing our, the way we assess property in the state to begin with. It's just, it's a scandal.
That's sort of the third rail of the local government's tax assessments, but no, we found in my legislation, again, going back, that it differed so dramatically from county to county as to what the assessment was, what year it was. Some of the counties had not reassessed since the 60s in terms of value, so it's very difficult to assess an actual value, and that's something that has to be addressed. The Local Government Commission has done marvelous work in that field, trying to see if there's a way to build fairness into the reassessment process.
You know, just to mention right on point, we're trying to deal with an education funding problem, and one of the proposals that came out of the Basic Education Funding Commission is to, to have a tax equity proposal. One of the things that always concerns me is, do we know enough about what taxes people are paying in local school districts to even do that smartly? And when you have, when you have an assessment system that's so out of whack, I don't always trust local, loads of numbers that we hear about tax rates in local communities. Our organization once did a report on that, and it was enormously difficult. We came up with something that we're fairly confident with, and I think the Basic Education Funding Commission has done so as well. But it would all be a lot easier to deal with if we had consistent, fair assessment all across the Commonwealth.
Yeah. It really needs to be done on a more regular basis. It's just a political hot potato for a lot of local communities. And there have been cases in the past where a home that is almost identical to another home, it gets sold, they obviously assess the value, and it's higher than the home next door, which hasn't been reassessed since 1965. So there are inequities in the system. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, invite him.
Our final testifier today is Neil Lesher from the Pennsylvania Chamber of Business and Industry.
Chairman Freeman, Chairman James, Chairman Sterling, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Neil Lesher. I'm Director of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Chamber of Business and Industry. We're the largest broad-based business advocacy organization in Pennsylvania. You know, the chamber believes that the Commonwealth system of local taxation must produce stable revenues and promote uniformity and consistency in its application of the law and treatment of taxpayers. The Pennsylvania Chamber supports local tax policy that promotes a competitive business climate and efforts at the state level that encourage local taxing authorities to pursue the same. High tax rates can impede employer growth, and the PA Chamber supports efforts to reduce local taxes by addressing cost drivers and placing reasonable limits on tax increases. Businesses in Pennsylvania are subject to a myriad of state and local taxes, including but not limited to corporate net income tax, sales tax, personal income tax, unemployment insurance tax, gross receipts taxes, property taxes, business privilege, and mercantile taxes. All total Pennsylvania businesses pay over $38 billion in state and local taxes annually. This includes $13 billion in property taxes and $6.6 billion in sales tax currently. Pennsylvania's uniquely harsh business tax and regulatory climate is stifling economic growth. Three separate analyses recently found that Pennsylvania is among the bottom third of states nationwide for key economic indicators. U.S. News and World Report ranks our economy 38th overall. Simplify LLC ranks us 37th for small business taxes, and the Tax Foundation ranks Pennsylvania 31st in its overall business tax climate. Perhaps most strikingly, the Kaufman Foundation found that Pennsylvania has the lowest rate of new entrepreneurship of all 50 states. As a corollary, businesses and people are fleeing Pennsylvania, and they're taking good-paying jobs with them. Axios first reported in 2022 that more people are leaving Pennsylvania than are moving in. Last year, the Bureau of Labor Statistics reported that Pennsylvania was among the top five states for businesses leaving. And separate studies by U-Haul and United Van Lines both indicate that employment opportunities are are driving the worsening exodus of residents from Pennsylvania. Specific to House Bill 677, I would note that the legislation allows counties and municipalities to use proceeds from additional sales tax to fund municipal pensions, maintain county and municipal services, or lower county and municipal property taxes. We would suggest that this be expanded to include lowering or eliminating local gross receipts taxes and the various nuisance taxes, which the legislature prohibited from expanding over three decades ago, yet still linger throughout the Commonwealth. Additionally, I would just note that while House Bill 678 does provide the option for corresponding tax relief, it does not require any type of dollar-for-dollar tax reduction in exchange for additional tax burden. Any conversation regarding local taxes should be a balanced discussion that includes efforts that would improve our tax climate, both by the method of tax and in the administration thereof. The mosaic of local governing bodies, which includes counties, municipalities, and school districts, and the vast ways and degrees businesses are taxed, underscores the need for reform. Short of comprehensive local government consolidation, gross receipts and various nuisance taxes should give way to a simpler, more predictable tax base model after the state income tax. The legislature should also explore other options for reducing cost drivers for local governments, such as prevailing wage reforms and other mandate reliefs. And lastly, the legislature should build on Act 32, which provides a model for how local taxing authorities can be consolidated. Remaining municipal and school district tax collections should be consolidating, eliminating the need for separate tax collectors. The current system is needlessly complex, highly duplicative, and unnecessarily costly. And lastly, I'll just note, I mean, it was mentioned, property tax assessments and the need for a more consistent basis of that, I will just note that the PA Chamber does support legislation that would require counties to reassess properties in their counties at least on an every 10-year basis, and coupling that with spot appeal reform as the current process for spot assessments unfairly targets business properties. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions of the members of the committee? Seeing none, we thank you for your testimony. This brings us to the end of our testifiers. However, we do want to call on Chairman Sturla for some closing remarks.
Thank you. Just as, along with what the chamber just said, I, I think that eliminating the, the gross receipts tax and other nuisance taxes should be incorporated as a possibility for what these, this one cent could be done, used for. Also, I had mentioned that the counties would be able to get reimbursed for the cost of assessing the tax-exempt properties. That may also be one of those things that we could include as something that could be used for in terms of core services. Core services might be a once-every-10-year assessment that could be then used, these dollars could be used for, so that it wasn't a, once every 10 years, the county commissioners got to figure out where they're coming up with $30 million to, to, you know, do a reassessment. So it, it could be a way to, to help fund that. I will say that, you know, Representative Rader said that the school taxes are the highest, and then the county, and nobody cares about municipal taxes. For somebody like myself and a lot of other people who live in municipalities like Representative or Chairman Freeman, school taxes might be the highest, but municipality is a short second or a close second, and the county taxes, like, who cares? You know, and so it really does vary from area to area in terms of what it is, but we all know that there are municipalities in almost every region that are hurting mightily. And so, you know, I, I will say that I look forward to working with the committee, hopefully to do an amendment or a corporation of bills to figure out how we can get some of this taken care of. Back in 1988, I was a city councilman in Lancaster, and we passed a resolution that we sent to the governor then urging him to do local property tax relief. That was in 1988.
That wasn't lost in the mail, was it?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that, you know, here we are, what, 36 years later, and to the best of my knowledge, there's never been any significant local property tax relief that's been done. And while I understand when Representative Rader talked about how, well, but let's not just do this piecemeal, let's do a comprehensive look at this. We've been waiting for 40 years to do a comprehensive look at this, and at some point in time, I guess I would urge the committee to not let the perfect, that being, hey, we're going to reform every tax that there is in the state of Pennsylvania, to get in the way of good. This bill, and bills similar to this, do a lot of good for a lot of constituents in the state of Pennsylvania and help municipalities from ending up on that distressed list and in the bankruptcy courts. And I would encourage you to fully look at the possibility of doing something similar to this, if not this bill itself, as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony and also for your legislation. Chairman James, do you have any closing remarks?
I'll just add my thanks. Plenty of food for thought here. Couple of surprises, but generally speaking, it sounds like the chamber is not necessarily in favor of this, and everybody else is, which is what I kind of expected starting at 10 o'clock this morning.
We all have our role to play.
Yes, we do.
See, I heard him say that they actually like the idea of getting rid of nuisance taxes and things like that.
Yeah, I do, too.
And this would be a much more consistent way of going about doing things.
If we can tie some of those strings to this, it becomes a bit more palatable, I agree. Thank you all for coming in, I appreciate it very much.
And just to note, it is the hope of the chair that we will bring this legislation up at some time in the near future, as well as my own tax-exempt property bill, which we're working with the Economy League to get some numbers crunched to get sure we have a good understanding of how the monies would be distributed under that bill. But I think they're both good endeavors to try and build some fairness into the tax structure, and definitely to provide relief to communities that have a high percentage of tax-exempt properties. I purposely chose the Johnstown flood money because Johnstown was devastated by a tremendous flood twice, and it was created in the 1930s to relieve them of that burden. Well, there's now a flood of nonprofits that are occupying a lot of property in many communities and really undercutting the tax base there. So I think we need to address that issue, either with Representative Sturla or my own or both combined, to make sure we get that issue squared away. Thank you all for your attendance and your testimony today. I want to remind the members that if they have not submitted a leave slip, please do so before the end of the day.